At this time, I'll call our special meeting of the York County School Board to order. It's Monday, May the 11th, and we have quite a few things on our agenda. Before we actually get started, I think everybody at their places here, board members, have these giant hands, and I saw this when I came in, and it says, "Mount Vernon loves our school board members." And in here, you open it up, and it's got all the signatures of students at Mount Vernon Elementary School, and it says, "We're in good hands." So that means a lot to all of us as board members, and so a special shout-out to Mount Vernon Elementary School and the students, and really cool.
When we vote and we raise our hands.
We can raise the hands when we vote tonight, absolutely. So Sandy, you get that when the hands go up? Okay. With that said, we're going to go ahead and get into our presentations this evening, and Dr. Shandor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitford. This evening, we have three presentations. We're going to start off. Board members, as you're aware, Board of Supervisors met last Tuesday and approved their budget. This evening, Mr. Jarrett's going to provide a recommendation on proposed adjustments to the school board's FY16 budgets. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Jarrett.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Mitford, school board members, if you'll give me one second, I want to pull this... Let's try this one. Okay. Yeah, as Dr. Shandor was saying, on last Tuesday night, the Board of Supervisors approved their budget, which incorporates our budget into that budget resolution. You had last talked about budget, to be honest about it, back on March the 30th. That's when you approved your budget to send to them, and so when they took action on that, they took into consideration your request. And just to remind you where we were, your request included a $1,032,000 increase in the local contribution to the schools, which is about a 2% increase. What was approved by the Board of Supervisors last Tuesday was a $361,000 increase, which works out to be about a 7 tenths of a percent increase. Now, that difference works out to be about $671,000. And Dr. Shandor and Mr. Carter have had numerous conversations on how to close that gap, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that in a couple of minutes. So if you look at the screen and in your packet, I believe there's a handout in your packet as well, that shows that difference of what the supervisors approved versus your request, and that's $671,000. Now, I would, as I was going to mention to you, is that the way that gap is being proposed to be covered is, we're looking at this year's budget, and we're looking at what we can do to save money this year, and then if we are able to do that, we're going to roll that money into fund balance at the end of the year, which then will go back to the Board of Supervisors. And then Mr. Carter is saying that what they will do then is appropriate that money back to the school division for buses and technology. So at our discretion, determine how we want to split that out. As you know, they have historically just done it for technology, so they're opening it up for buses as well. So given that, what the goal is, is to try to at least come up with $671,000 out of end-of-year funds that would roll forward. I suspect it's actually going to be more than that, but that's the minimum amount that we want to try to have available. So if we were to do that, then what that means is, we could reduce what's the amounts that are in the school board proposed budget for buses and technology to accommodate, and we could accommodate those reductions on a one-time basis. Because remember, rollover to fund balance is one-time money. It's not ongoing revenue. So it gives you, I guess you might say, it gives you an avenue to fund those items for at least one year. So what we would do, so what this proposal is, is to reduce the number of buses that are in the FY16 school board proposed budget from seven to four. Right now, the total number of buses in the school board proposed budget is seven. This would reduce it to four, and those four, that would leave funding left for four regular buses. Now, you may recall, if you think back to some of the procurement resolutions in recent months, we've been able to pick up some additional buses this year through other funding sources. So that has helped us, you know, it's a continual process of trying to close the gap on these buses, but we've been able to do some of that this year, and the goal would be next year with this rollover money to continue to close that gap. So it's a process over a number of years where we would, if I recall correctly, I think we're, we need about 23 replacement buses to get back on schedule. So it is, again, it's a process over several years to do that. We would not expect to do that in one year because that was a result of reductions that took place over six years.
Would parentheses go around 15 because you're taking the 15,000 out?
No, that's a different item there. I'll talk, that's, I'm talking about the $281,000. So what you would do, this first item, is reduce the expenditures in the school board proposed budget for buses by $281,024. Okay, now that will still leave money in this account. It'll leave enough money to buy four regular ed buses. No special ed because we picked up a couple of special ed buses this year. So it would just be four regular ed buses, and that would be left. And again, we're going to try to close that gap though, but from four to seven, at least on a one-year basis, through the rollover of fund balance that will occur at the end of the year. So technically speaking, you can look at this and say, "Well, we're not going to have to cut buses at all for one year. We'll be able to maintain that replacement of seven buses at least for one year." The next item was number two, which is the technology refurbishment. You may recall, your proposed budget includes $800,000 for technology refurbishment. It's basically the same thing as we talked about for buses here. We would hope to have funds available at the end of the year that would roll forward, that we would close this gap again for one more year. So it's really a stop-gap kind of a provision, but you know, these times, I guess you have to look at stop-gaps. You've got to take each year at a time and look for opportunities to move forward, even though you may not have the operating money, but that will be something we'll have to deal with in our years. So this last item is a new item. Now, I would remind you, back when in your school board proposed budget, you got a request from the York Foundation for Public Education, and that request was to kind of close the gap if we can't help them on some of their overhead costs. And one of their overhead costs is a secretarial service that we provide to them. We have one position at the school board office, that's about 47% right now being paid for by the foundation. They came to superintendent back when the school board proposed budget was being built and said, "Listen, we need some help with this." So in your budget, you provided $13,000 worth of help, which lowered that percentage from 47 to 25%. Well, they've come back. They've come back and asked for more help, and this is subsequent to you approving your budget, and so what they've really asked us to do now is to pick up all of the cost of that secretarial service. They're looking to try to, I guess you might say, improve some other areas of the foundation. And so that's $15,000 more of a cost shift. So in other words, instead of us getting reimbursed for $15,000 of what's left of a 25% secretarial spot, we would fund 100% of that secretarial slot, so we would pick up that $15,000. Now, what remains to be seen, and I think this is where operations is going to have to get involved at some level, once this rolls over to next year, is what level of service are we going to provide the foundation? Okay? Because if it's at 47% now, are we going to continue at that level, or are there some ways of shifting some things around that we can, you know, pick up less of the burden on that? They can pick up some more by shifting some responsibilities around in their shop. None of that has been discussed yet, but that's something I think we need to do because, I mean, we're putting a good foot forward here by saying, "We're going to pick up..." You're picking up essentially $28,000 worth of cost next year that they're paying this year. That's one way to look at it.
Dennis, I think for all the viewers and even us around the table, we need to kind of emphasize what exactly the foundation does for us. Is there somebody that would be comfortable kind of summarizing that a little bit?
Sure, sure. I'm the liaison to the York Foundation for Public Education. I like to call it the extra ingredient because they fund grants to be used by teachers inside the classroom. So they add that flavor. For instance, a teacher at Coventry Elementary School took her kids out into the river or bay to learn about oyster restoration. They would never have had that opportunity had it not been for that York Foundation grant. The York Foundation brings in more than half a million dollars every year, and that goes directly to our students, to our staff. They provide educational grants to teachers as well as a staff member that's funded by our own former superintendent, Steve Staples. I can't cheerlead and say enough wonderful things about the York Foundation. They really do add to the school division through their sponsors, and they're overwhelmed with the grants that the teachers are providing every year, and they don't have enough funding to meet the demand. But what they do is beyond that extra step and enrichment in the classroom.
So kids are actually, kids are actually being directly, are directly benefiting from that?
Oh, most definitely.
So the recommendation is to pick up that additional $15,000 to provide them that flexibility within their own budgets. And so you can see by the ledger there, it pretty much balances out. The revenue adjustments balance out through the expenditure adjustments. Now, this item is incorporated in, this spreadsheet if you will, is incorporated in the budget resolution that you'll be looking at later tonight. Okay? It's under your action items. So that budget resolution incorporates these changes because remember, your proposed budget, these are the only changes that are being reflected from what you originally approved, and these that are on the screen here, and that's what's reflected in the budget resolution itself. So any other questions on this? I'd be glad to try and entertain.
I think for me, and back to that 15,000, which means we're adding that back, but the first two numbers don't add up to the 671.
That's right.
So 15,000 has to come someplace within the overall budget.
Well, it's coming from those two reductions. If you take the total of those two reductions, it adds up to more than 671, and so it's picking up the cost of that $15,000.
Right, okay.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if you could explain the end-of-year funds again, and how much money you think we may receive back from the county, and how much of this may be funded through that?
Yeah, well, the anticipation is all of this is going to be funded through the rollover dollars. And essentially what it is, is that there is a, there's not a formal agreement on this. There's an informal agreement, if you will, between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, and they've honored that for, at least for the last 15 years, if not longer than that, where whatever funds are not spent by the school board at the end of the year, they will reappropriate that back to the school division for technology. Now, that's a good thing to do because what it does, it's an incentive for the school division to be prudent at year-end, to not just go spend money, to be spending money. If we don't want to, if we can't spend it, leave it there because it's going to come back to us. So it's a good program to have in place. What we're doing this year is we are basically reducing a number of purchase orders that are outstanding now, and we're not going to carry those over to next year, and that's how we're going to end up creating this balance. And so is it going to cause some issues down the road? I don't think it will because I think there's enough out there to where there's still enough flexibility with this. But does it reduce flexibility in the long run? Probably a little bit. I mean, it would be, it'd be wrong not to say it did, but I think it's workable and it's manageable. The goal is to have more than 671, and that's what we're working towards. Because what we would really like to do, if you think about it, we always had about between $300,000 and $500,000 rollover. So we would like to have another amount similar to that in addition to this, just for the regular technology that IT uses to replenish with. So it's, the goal is to actually have more than 671. I can tell you, short of anything really dramatic happening between now and the end of the year, we will have 671. The real target right now is to try to have more than that. And the good news about this too is that in the conversations that Dr. Shandor's had with Mr. Carter at this point, is that whatever the amount is, they're amenable to putting it to those two areas, buses and technology, which is, I think it's a positive thing for us because it gives us the ability now to start trying to build up some funds to replace those items, okay? Whereas we didn't have that flexibility in the past. So I think it's a positive for us to try to work within the constraints of that. The only downside to this whole thing is this, is that we're using one-time money to close the gap, okay? At some point, bus replacements have got to be increased in our operating budget, but that won't happen this upcoming year. But it's got to be something that we will continue to look at each year as we go through and develop the budget, and look for ways to try to close that operating budget gap that we have. So that would be a fiscal year '17 and beyond kind of discussion that takes place.
I think the important piece to reckon, to pay notice to here is that they've recognized these two areas to have a general conversation about it. I think the joint meetings we've had have been healthy, but now we have identified a couple of things that are major that now it's on their radar too, I mean, in the Board of Supervisors. So as we continue, and county staff, so as we continue into FY '17, '18, '19, these things are not going to come off the table. They're going to continue to be discussions between the new county administrator that they just hired and Dr. Shandor as he transitions into the county. Mr. Mitford, you had a comment?
Well, I was just curious, once the year-end funds excess is known and is officially returned to the school division, will you go in and amend the budget and identify what those dollars are for?
Well, that's a good question because typically the way it's happened in the past is they automatically just appropriated it back to our capital projects fund for technology. So the school board's not had to take any action on that. But I suspect there is going to have to be some action in this new arena that we're going into because you're going to have to determine how much you want to go to technology and how much you want to go to buses. So it's not just all rolling over to technology. So I would see, Mr. Mitford, more discussions taking place once that amount is known to determine, okay, what is the breakup of those dollars? How do we want to divide them up? So I think that's a very real possibility. We would need to consider that. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Saywood?
Two questions, Dennis. Well, first, a comment. I appreciate your explanation of the rollover, and this comes on the heels of the town hall meeting at the high schools. And one of the questions that the Bruton Group asked to both Mr. Zeremberg and myself was, "Why do you have excess at the end of the year?"
Well, that...
So it was interesting that they wanted to know that, so we talked about that, and I think this is, this amount is more than we normally see in a rollover, and it's important that the community knows why.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Ms. Saywood, because this is a planned process we've got going on here. This is not, "Let's see how much money we have left over today." This is a planned process where we're saying, "We're going to make sure we have enough money left over." And why do you need a rollover anyway in a school division? The answer to that is really simple. School divisions in Virginia are not allowed to have a fund balance. That is state law, and don't ask me to justify that because I can't. It doesn't make really good, it doesn't make fiscal sense under any kind of environment. But we by law do not have the right to have a fund balance. So at the end of the year, technically, anything that we have left over gets brought back to zero, and what that means is, if you had a negative balance at the end of the year, then you've overspent your budget, or you've overspent the funding that you had available. Two different things there, overspending the budget versus overspending the revenues you have available. So that's why you have a fund balance because you can't cut it down to the dollar. You leave enough flexibility in this thing to where you've got the organization covered from a legal standpoint to where there's no questions about, okay, did we meet our fiscal responsibilities? So that's why you do that. If we didn't have, if we had a fund balance, it would be a completely different conversation right now. I could tell you a number of ways we would be doing it. That wouldn't be in that scenario, but we don't, and that's state law in Virginia, and that's not changing, I don't think.
They didn't have any counteraction or responses to that answer. My other one that I'm through, I appreciate the understanding with Mr. Carter as you negotiated technology and buses, and this flavor of the conversation will carry over with your county administrator.
Correct. I've already had a, we've already had some communication, so.
Okay, great.
Good bridges.
Try.
Okay, well, that concludes that presentation. Our next one is on elementary school hours.
Yes, board members, school board members, as you recall, we had a discussion at the last work session related to elementary school hours. Tonight, Dr. James is going to provide additional information and a proposal on this topic. So go ahead, Dr. James.
Thanks, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Mitford, members of the board, and members of the viewing audience, before you and also on the screen, is a proposal to extend the length of the elementary school day. If you remember back in April, we discussed possibilities for extending the school day because of all the time missed this year for inclement weather. So if you look at the handout, if you look at the handout rather, you can see the green section of the handout refers to the current schedule. That is the schedule that was in place at the beginning of the school year. You may also recall that starting on March 9th, we extended the length of the elementary day by 22 minutes. The current schedule does not speak to those 22 minutes. It speaks to the original schedule. If you look at the blue-shaded portion of the chart, there you'll see a proposed schedule. This proposed schedule lengthens the elementary day by four minutes. As we all know, we have elementary schools operating on two different schedules, and the main reason is because of transportation, the amount of time it takes buses to deliver students to the middle school and then go back and pick up students and deliver them to the elementary schools. So if you look at the chart, the four schools, Bethel Manor, McGruder, Mount Vernon, and Seifert, under the proposal, they will start at 8:41, four minutes earlier.
In tab?
Tab, excuse me, tab. Guess I need to...
It's okay.
Tab, I'm interested, thank you. You see that they began at 8:41, but the ending time is the same as it is with the schedule that we had at the beginning of the school year. So the four minutes were at the very beginning. For the other six schools, Coventry, Dare, Grafton-Bethel, Seifert, Walla Mel, and York Elementary, you see, they will start under the proposal at 8:56, and of course, their ending time will still be 3:36 as it is now. More information in the chart is also provided with the amount of instructional hours. Looking at the current schedule for next year, we kept those hours. We'll have 1,010 hours and 48 minutes, or roughly 3.65 days of what we call bank time. Bank time refers to the hours beyond the required 990 hours. Under the proposed schedule, you'll see that's 1,022 hours and 48 minutes, or 5.65 days of bank time. So that proposal, if the board is agreeable, will come to you for approval when the student handbook is presented to you at the June meeting. That's part of the hours of operation is included in the student handbook. So tonight, we just need some guidance, some direction about the four minutes, if that's what we should include when we bring it back before you for approval in general.
It's, we all got some emails today because Mrs. Bowers' class at Grafton-Bethel did a persuasive writing assignment, and some of the students wrote little emails to us, like these extra 20 minutes is really not good for my family because we don't get time to do our homework like we used to, and things like that. And it's kind of interesting to hear the kids talk about that, what we had to do 20-minute thing. So pulling that back at the end of the school year, resetting the clock, and then finding the minutes at the beginning, which I think was the board's guidance at our last discussion. How does everybody feel about this?
I'm very pleased to see that you went to the beginning of the day instead of the end of the day.
I am too.
I am. How does that impact the other runs? We can make that five minutes up without any, okay?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, that's a very good question. I tell you, I spoke to the 10 elementary principals. They're very pleased, they're ecstatic about the minutes spent in the very beginning of the day. I also work with transportation staff to look at what are the possibilities. There are some routes that we may have some concerns, but I, as we talked about it, each year's different. The length of the runs vary, so with those concerns of the few routes, because we tracked the bus from high school to middle to elementary, just to see how much differential, we also talked to the middle school principals because there is a set time at middle schools where they allow kids, once the bus are there, to enter the building. The middle school principals, without a doubt, said, "We can change that time a little bit earlier to give us more time at the elementary level." So that's something we're going to have in place. So what you'll see have happening, we have a scheduled school hours for staff and all of that. So middle schools, it'll move up five minutes. So the teachers will be there five minutes early because the kids will come, enter the building five minutes earlier. So we've had some very good discussions about this, and everybody seemed to be pleased that we all put our shoulders to the wheel and make this work.
Us working together, great.
I just have one other follow-up question. I know four minutes is not a lot of time in the morning, but it does, it does come to when it's breakfast. Some of our schools do breakfast in the classroom, some of them serve breakfast in the cafeteria. Is this going to, is that going to still be protected because quite a few of our students do take advantage of the breakfast program in the morning? We don't want students not to do that because they've got to be in a class at a particular time, so we squeeze their time, and then they have hungry tummies when they're trying to learn and focus. So it's just keep, not really a question so much, just keep an eye on that because we don't want to see that program slip.
You know, you're absolutely right.
All right, well, you got the guidance. Move forward on that.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. James. And the last presentation for this segment of the meeting is Dr. James is going to provide a little bit of information related to meal prices for 2015, 2016 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. It is going, here we go. Proposed meal prices for next year. As you know, each year we come back to you with proposed meal prices that really talk about what to increase, if there is one, in meal prices for the following year. So for contextual purposes, let's talk about what the current price of lunches are, the federal reimbursement we get for each meal, because the federal, the amount of federal reimbursement plays into what the required adjustment is going to be. Currently at the elementary level, a lunch is $2.045. At the secondary level, middle and high, is $2.055. But the federal government, because we're part of the National School Lunch Program, reimburses for all meals served. For a paid meal, we're reimbursed or given 28 cents for every meal that's served, paid. For reduced, that's a 58 cent reimbursement. And for a free lunch, $2.98. So the difference in the reimbursement between a free meal and a paid meal is $2.70. That becomes a benchmark. The federal government is saying we should provide the same level of support for a paid meal as we do for a free meal. So you see, there is a difference in the price. So... So, with that in mind, then we're required to adjust our lunch prices because we charge, or in this school division in the nation, that charged less than $2.70 for a paid meal would then have to adjust their lunch prices. In Virginia, for consistency across school divisions, we all use a tool from the Virginia Department of Education called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool. So, with that tool, you put in your data from this year, number of meals served, prices, and all of that, and it'll tell you the range of an increase for your lunch program. For us, it was eight cents. But they allow you to round down to near five cents. And of course, the guidelines are, no increase can be greater than 10 cents. So, with that in mind, considering all of that, then it looks as if we need to increase lunch prices by five cents. Over the past two years, of course, the increase has been 10 cents in each of the past years. So, we're looking at a five cents increase. So, with the five cent increase, what that would mean at the elementary level, breakfast now is $1.35. The proposed rate for next year is $1.40. Lunch, now, as we said earlier, as I said earlier, $2.45. And the proposed increase, five cents, be $2.50. There's no change in the price of milk, but there is a five cent increase in the price of an adult breakfast or an adult lunch, at the same amount, five cents. Another important factor is the reduced meal prices. Of course, that rate is set by the federal government. Right now, there is no proposed change. They will remain at 30 cents and 40 cents respectively. That's the elementary level. For secondary, same kind of increase. Breakfast, of course, is $1.45 for secondary schools. The proposal is to increase it to $1.50. Lunch now is $2.55. The proposal increases it to $2.60. Again, no change in the price of milk. But the adult breakfast and adult lunch, each will increase by five cents to $1.90 and $3.25. And of course, with the reduced meals, there's no increase, just like elementary. They will remain at 30 cents and 40 cents respectively. That's all I have to share for you this evening on that. This will come back to you for approval next week, the May meeting, when we normally approve lunch prices. In past years, I provided you some data from around the region about what those increases are. We've worked with food service directors in the other school divisions, and we've not gotten to the point where they are comfortable at telling us what the increase is because it's still in the proposal stage. But it looks like some school divisions, just in general conversations, may go 10 cents, some may go five, but we are among the ones that are going to go five cents.
Dr. James, I have a question about the quality of food that we're providing. I think we all had that question when we were at the high schools for the town hall forum. And I know when Mr. Mentor and I were at Grafton High School, I asked the students in the auditorium, how many ate lunch there? And a couple of hands raised. More than 90% said that they bring their lunch. What is Sedexo doing to try to improve the quality of food?
Right, what they're doing, of course, is a difficult task because of requirements from the federal government. The reduction in calories, the reduction in sodium. So, they have some guidelines. So, what they are doing is constantly looking at recipe items, also working with vendors to see what food items are available. And sometimes, they try to make it more like Chipotle with the burrito bar and those kinds of things to try to get kids to come in. What I really found is very interesting, and Mr. Medford talked earlier about breakfast in the classroom. One school implemented that a couple of weeks ago, and what happened? That school has increased maybe threefold the number of breakfasts served. At York High School, you know, the breakfast carts, that the kids won't come to the cafeteria. You take the food to them in areas where they normally congregate in the mornings. So, that's increased that amount. But Michelle and that staff are constantly looking at ways to increase the amount. She even has ideas about doing open house next fall to have samples of items available for parents and students to see during open house so you know what's really being served in the cafeteria.
I thought that's a good idea. I know I went home and asked my kids about it, and they said that they had noticed an increase in the number of parents who were actually bringing Chick-fil-A, Burger King, and lunches to their children at the high school.
I think we've gotten that same question for eight years at the town hall. Has there ever been food that's considered to be good by the students? I don't know.
One of the things that, well, yeah, I think one of the things that came out of talking with some of the management-level people at our national convention with Sedexo is they're really pushing the vendors to do the reformulations of some of the foods so they meet the federal requirements, but they put it through a national battery of testing, I guess, where they have students that taste the foods and try the foods and give feedback on the foods before they actually land in the cafeterias at our schools. So, it's good to know that they're pushing that, you know, and having, you know, whether it's Tyson or whoever's producing the product they're looking for, to do something because the federal mandates, once again, really are limiting the abilities of, and it's a concern for us as a school board, because as we move our prices up and the kids don't like the foods, then our participation may slip. And this is a self-sustaining budget. And so, if we end up in a situation where we have to fund food service again, then it comes right out of our operating budget, which in turn takes away from instruction. I mean, it's just a domino effect. So, I think we have to keep lobbying at the federal level to try to do something about the mandates. And although V SBA and NSBA does a lot of that, and there's been a lot of movement to try to, and some of it's been loosened up, I believe. They've done some changes-
There have been some changes, yes.
-that freed some stuff up to where the food was able to be adjusted a little bit in sodium levels and proteins and stuff, but it's-
More, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, this is just-
We have more variety now, too. I mean, choices has been, it's been a big thing in the past. So, I'm hoping they're doing that each year, maybe just having more options for the kids. Maybe they can find something that, yeah, the Olive Garden items.
It might be a good idea if the school board members had lunch in the cafeteria at the elementary.
Eat quite a bit.
Not in the past, yes.
It's, I actually enjoy it. I mean, for me, it's not, it's not a big deal for the price and the amount of food you get. It's, do I eat all the different choices? No, because some choices I don't even eat at home.
I think the calorie intake, when you think about it, especially high school kids, when the portion size is not as large, I mean, I'd have to eat three or four trays just to-
Six foot, six foot two, 200 pound, 16, 17-year-old football player.
They need the calories. Paige?
Yeah, Dr. James, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we must comply to this to increase prices, if not, we lose funding.
Absolutely.
So, how much, do you remember right off how much funding we would lose if we didn't comply?
Well, I don't have a number offhand. When you look at the amount of reimbursement for every meal served, I mean, that could be quite substantial. And then, if we don't get the free and reduced portion, which is almost $3 a meal, then we have to provide somehow a meal for those students. Then where does it come from? I could probably see the price of our lunch going even greater than.
We're lucky that we don't have to jump to the $2.70 right off that.
Right, toward the $2.70 or $3. You know, I think some school divisions up north decided not to go with the National School Lunch Program, so the price of our lunch is $3, $3.5.
Yes, some of the discussions at the national conference of school boards that have done that, but they had to backfill, you know, in one case, it was like over a million dollars. They had to backfill to, but now they're serving Chick-fil-A and Pizza Hut and Subway, but it's like a college campus kind of setup. But for food prices, I mean, the meal price just went through the roof. All right.
Thank you, Sherrod.
Thank you.
Our next-
Thank you, Dr. James.
That concludes our presentation, right?
This will be at the May meeting.
Till here, okay. All right, we have two action items this evening. One's a consideration of approval, Resolution 15-22, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2016 school board approved operating budget. So, I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Dennis, are you going to do anything or talk about this particular action item?
I can. I would just, I would just reiterate that this incorporates the changes we talked about earlier. And this budget does set the stage for an important event. And that important event is getting contracts out to employees, which you'll be considering that at your next meeting, as far as the pay plan goes. So, this sets the groundwork for the next step, which is pay. Getting the pay set up for next fiscal year for, and getting contracts out to about 900 teachers.
All right. Mrs. Ford?
A motion made by Mrs. Kurski and seconded by Dr. George to approve Resolution 15-22. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kurski?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood? And Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Sit here.
All right, our next action item is a consideration of approval, Resolution 15-23. It's a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. I don't know if anybody's discussed financial matters this evening. You can do that, Mr. Sherrod.
This item is an item related to Grafton Bethel Elementary School. And as you know, we've got a renovation project going on there. That's been going on for the last couple of years. It's going to keep going on this summer. And this is to replace the cabinets or the casework in halls 300 and 400, okay? Because there's going to be work going on in those halls. I was asking Mr. Sherhard earlier today, I said, well, you know, how long have those cabinets been in there? And I could not believe what he told me. I mean, I went to Grafton Bethel Elementary School as a first grader in 1962. I was there. Well, those are the same cabinets that were there when I was there. And apparently, they were there in 1954 when the school was built. So, it's high time to replace these cabinets. I'm going to go get a piece of them before they get torn up. I might have an initial somewhere in there. It might, might be in there. But in any event, this is a part of that renovation program that's going on at that school. And needless to say, this is well overdue.
I probably won't even make it to humanity habitat, definitely. All right, I need a motion. Well, we already have a motion.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve Resolution 15-23. Mrs. Kurski?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
And again.
And Mr. Medford?
Yes.
All right, now Vernon, they did a great job. Report of the superintendent, Dr. Shandora?
Yes, give me one. All right, school board members, as I shared with you early on in my tenure, that my goal was to spend my first few months listening and learning. Tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to share some of my findings from the past five to six months. The entry stage is critical in assessing the strengths and challenges we face as a school division. It was important to capture this information regarding the community and the organization in a systematic and thorough manner. Tonight's purpose is to report out my findings with numerous departments and all of the school visits. So, this picture you're looking at is actually Ms. Hoffman, Ms. Nancy Hoffman, who's a, who's a teacher over at Yorktown Middle. And I can tell you, she was the first person I met here. If you recall, when I got here, I met her on the plane, and she gave me a lot of feedback right then, so.
That was funny.
It was, yes. So, I got to visit her class. So, again, while analyzing reports and other statistical data has been extremely important, nothing replaces the information and knowledge that our employees, parents, and most importantly, that our students possess. Since I've arrived in Y C S D, I've been out in the schools and in the community seeking feedback. I've had the opportunity to hold 46 focus groups, which included students, staff, and community members, and almost, as you can see, almost 4,000 sticky notes with the feedback from these groups. Each thought that was captured on the notes was compiled and analyzed. And I certainly want to thank Ms. Catherine Goff, who was responsible for all 3,896 of those comments. Tonight, I'm reporting out the major themes which emerged. First, it's critical that we listen to our students and understand how they learn best. The student focus groups were held at each of the five high schools. The groups were structured, so we had a representative sample from the student body. All grade levels, nine through 12, were represented. And when I had those meetings with the students, I wanted to make sure that they gave me feedback from their whole K-12 experience, not just, not just their high school experience. So, the first question that I talked to the students, that they gave me some feedback on, I told them to, you know, explain to me the characteristics of a great teacher and tell me those of an ineffective teacher. And as you can see up on the board there, a great teacher is someone who they described as passionate, engaged, and caring. And then, an ineffective teacher is someone who teaches directly from the book, who's disorganized, unfocused, and perhaps uncaring. And I can tell you, I'll stop just for a moment. The information that I received from this question alone was so valuable that after two weeks, I used it and presented it to principals, presented it to cabinet and our executive staff who's here, who are here this evening. When you hear this information directly from our students and the student voice, that's a difference maker, or that's a game changer, as far as I'm concerned. So, I led the team in a lot of activities regarding the characteristics of great teachers and ineffective teachers, extremely important. The next question that they gave some feedback on were, I asked them to describe innovations that teachers should implement. And as you can imagine, the first one was, listen to the students. And they, you know, it's one of those things where when you put a group of high school students in a room and you start having some conversations with them, they really were a wonderful group at every, every one of the schools. So, listen to our students. They talked about having more interactive, hands-on, and technology-based activities, and less emphasis on testing, more on learning and understanding. The next, the next thought there was to ask them, how has school shaped their future plans? So, as you can see, again, the major themes there were a variety of classes and opportunities, multiple methods of teaching and learning. And again, we have a wonderful, you know, when you think about our extracurricular programs at all of our schools, we really have some wonderful programs for our kids. And then the last one there, what's been the most impactful instructional experience? And you can see what our, what our kids shared, great teachers. Projects and hands-on learning are extended magnet programs. So, as you can see, the kids really, really gave us some outstanding feedback. But I have to tell you, that first question up there, that really hit, when you're an educator, that hits you in the gut when you think about students and what they're thinking of a great teacher or an ineffective teacher, as far as characteristics goes. Oh, I went too fast. I'm sorry. Dennis, let me hit the back button. Thanks. All right, it's also essential that we listen to our staff to know how they perceive Y C S D. Staff focus groups were held in all 19 schools and in every department in the school division. So, the first question that I asked staff, what are the strengths of the school division? So, the first thing that they shared, and again, I met with over 17, 1800 staff members in the school division, about how talented and dedicated our staff are here. They also wanted to share that a big strength was that we have a tight-knit and extremely supportive community here in York County. And finally, the reputation of excellence which exists in Y C S D. The next question looks at what our greatest challenges were, or, I'm sorry, what our challenges are. And again, this is coming from our staff. Too many initiatives, not enough time, compensation, and then morale. And, you know, if you look at this the way most of us do, you can certainly see that it's like the perfect math problem. One plus one equals, well, you know, a morale problem when you think of, you have a lot of initiatives going on. We've had some compensation sort of froze for a number of years, and certainly, that's going to lead to some morale issues. What do I need to know to lead the school division? You know, the first thing that staff, you know, really talked about was for me to really learn the area and really understand the division, school division's history. They also shared that there is definitely a uniqueness amongst our school populations. And they're right, after I've been here for a number of months now and get in the schools, there's certainly a uniqueness between the schools. And then the third one on there, you know, what do I need to know is, I need to know how to strengthen that relationship with our board of supervisors. That came, you know, straight from our, from our staff. What are the first two or three things that you hope I do as superintendent? You know, as you can see, address compensation, narrow the focus, provide meaningful professional development, and the last one there, improve communication. And again, those were the four topics that really popped off for the, when you think of what are the first two or three items. Our students and staff are in our schools every day, and we certainly understand their perspectives. But we all realize that without a strong community, without strong community support, we cannot be successful. I held four community focus groups at the high schools in each zone to gather additional insight. Before I get into that data, I want to certainly thank each of the school board members who, all of you attended those meetings with me, and I think you got to hear those concerns firsthand that night. And I certainly appreciate you, you spending the time that evening as we gathered the feedback. So, with the community, I asked the same four questions. And you'll begin to see some similarities between, between the staff and community. What are the division's strengths? Again, quality staff, parental involvement, strong academic reputation. And, you know, this is definitely, you know, recognition for this school board is that the community feels like the school board is a definite strength, and then the leadership in the school division has been, has been strong. in the school division has been, has been strong. What are our greatest challenges? The relationship with the board of supervisors. Again, these are challenges that our community brought out at these sessions at the high schools. Funding constraints and communication with parents and effective use of technology. What do I need to know to lead the school division? And again, these, when I'm out in the community and in the schools, I've heard this over and over again. People move here for the schools. That definitely came, that was loud and clear, I heard that in the community. And then the community is a great resource. We have a wonderful community with a lot of folks who want to contribute their time and energies to assisting the schools. And then special education needs to continue to be a priority within our school division. What are the first two or three things that you hope I do? Again, from, this is from the community, staff compensation, consider alternate academic offerings, making sure that I hold staff accountable, and being visible in the schools often. So looking, just thinking through a couple of key takeaways, all three groups, you know, when you go out and you ask for feedback, you get it, right? I mean, you certainly, you certainly get the feedback, which is the purpose of it. It's so much more valuable than conducting a survey. All three groups not only want to be heard, but also want to be involved in supporting Y C S D. The passion and dedication from our staff and from our community, and really, quite frankly, from our kids, is at an extreme high level. We clearly have a supportive community who want us to be the best educators for all of our kids in York County, and our students demonstrated through this exercise that they want to be challenged, supported, and most importantly, inspired by great teachers. So just a couple of next steps that I want to share. You know, increasing student achievement certainly is a focus for everyone in this room and everyone in this community, and all of our employees. As noted in the feedback, strong academic reputation came up quite a bit, strong extent and advanced placement programs came up a bunch, but, you know, there are some areas that we have to work on. So when I think about improving special ed outcomes, that's definitely important for this school board and for this community. But one thing that didn't pop out as a major theme, but it was definitely throughout a lot of the conversations, was support for the students in the middle. That came up quite a bit in the community and quite a bit for our staff. So we're beginning to formulate where we're headed. So our instructional team's in the process of narrowing our focus. We're in the process of assessing and prioritizing our initiatives. A lot of that work is taking place now. Effective educators and leaders, when you think about our team, we clearly have high-quality people who make up the school division. Moving forward, we will continue to improve our hiring practices in order for us to attract the best and the brightest staff members so that they'll make Y C S D their destination. We must continue to focus on our strategic plan goals and objectives to offer high-quality, competitive compensation. And finally, we will improve our support for staff by developing effective coaching strategies. And I've talked to the school board and cabinet and executive staff about what does coaching look like? How do we help our people improve? Fiscally responsible is the next bullet point. Y C S D has a great reputation for fiscal responsibility, and that starts with these five board members sitting at this table. And of course, Mr. Jarrett, who has spent a great deal of time in this, we just heard how much time he's spent in the school division.
He slipped on that, Dennis. He left that out.
Yes. So, you know, one area that our team is going to continue to improve on is the focus and alignment of our resources within each of our departments in connection with the strategic plan. So we've had a lot of conversations within cabinet and executive staff about making sure that we, we're tracking leading indicators and metrics and setting smart goals to help us move to where we need to go. We, when you look at our strategic plan, there's a lot of goals on there with a lot of statistics and a lot of numbers. I'm pushing the team to sort of narrow that focus in a number of areas in each shop to make sure that we are, we're having effective strategy that's going to help push that goal and get us a positive outcome, whether it's an efficiency goal or a student outcome. So that's something that we're going to continue to work on. And then increase involvement. Clearly, through my entry process, student, staff, and community support Y C S D, they want to be involved and be a partner in the work. I think that's a key word, is folks want to have a voice, but they want to be a partner, not only provide feedback, but give input to where we're going. So, you know, my commitment is that we're going to continue to provide opportunities for feedback and more importantly, input in how we're driving the decision-making that goes on in our school division. And last but not least, I love this last picture. Any questions or comments? That completes my report out to the board. Dr. George?
You know, it looks like three or four times in here have mentioned strength in relationship with the board of supervisors, relationship with the board of supervisors. And I got to say, I just feel really, I feel really good about it. And I think, I think the community has, if they followed, they've seen that also. It's been a lot of work on everybody's part. I got kudos to Mark, you know, his chair, he's really, really built bridges and gone over and above and has done some wonderful things with that this year. And Dr. Shandor, certainly you jumped right in, and it's been great. So I'm real encouraged by that. But it just kind of reflected that that's what the community thinks, too, and that's what they run on, so. We're right on track there. It's always good to have some confirmation, affirmation with community surveys.
Robbie, it was a team. We approached it as a team. I think they saw us as a team. We, the new superintendent, we had, we had great conversations as a team with our board supervisors, so I think we all can share in that positive. It was much different this year than it has been in the past, definitely much different, more rewarding, and the outcome has been positive for us. And I think we continue that as we move forward. I think we're going to have a, I mean, this, this right here, this information, Dr. Shandor, that you just presented, is the reason why we do what we do. This, you went out to the, put boots on the ground. Literally, you put boots on the ground, put your feet in them, and you hit the road, and you went out and did exactly what we tasked you to do when we hired you, and the data that you brought back to us is positive. I mean, now we can take that and next step it, and it was really powerful. It was good.
I'm very pleased that you went out and you were talking to stakeholders. I wish the number of parents that had attended our forums had been larger, thirty-two parents. I hope it doesn't stop here with you and with staff. As you said, increase involvement, that's something that I know families want. They don't want to, okay, take a survey or tell you their opinion and then be patted on the head, and life goes on, and they want to be heard.
Sure.
They do want to be a partner, and it is public education, and they should be a partner. They're entrusting us with their children. So I hope it continues and doesn't stop here, and, you know, the box is not checked and you go on. I want the commitment that you will continue.
I don't think that was ever the intent. We talked about doing it quarterly, you know, just having the pilot, the one pilot group.
I think, you know, when you think about gaining feedback and then you start taking action, I think that a couple of things. One, to Ms. Kurski's point about the number of parents, you know, I'll think about timing location as well next time, whether a middle school may be a better opportunity for some of our communities, or maybe offering multiple sessions within a community for different times. You know, there's one part that you get connected, and then there's another phase two is staying connected. So that's sort of to your point. I'm certainly committed to looking at, we have some advisory groups that we meet with already, whether it's principals, or we have some parent groups that we meet with. But, you know, one thing that I'm committed to next year, I certainly am going to develop a student advisory council. Those kids gave me unbelievable information, a great group of kids, and quite honestly, I feel such a connection with those kids, because now when I go into the schools, I know them. I know them well. I've attended a number of activities and got to meet them. So that information's extremely valuable to us, and so we're certainly going to commit to staying connected and moving forward.
And we hope we increase the number of parents.
Sure.
I truly believe in some cases, you know, I hope that the parents that didn't come out or couldn't, they're pleased with Y C S D. They're happy with the direction that we're moving. But yes, we would definitely like to have the numbers increased of the parents that come out and participate. So look at that next year, and we'll, I mean, I think as parents get to realize you truly are listening, and Y C S D and the school board truly takes this information and moves forward, more parents may come out because they know that it's making a difference.
While we're talking about it, when are we thinking about doing it again? What are your thoughts?
I want to digest all this information, build some strategy behind where we're headed, certainly next year. I mean, this is something that, you know, it may look a little different each year. Can I do all nineteen schools and do forty-six focus groups again next year? I'm not sure I can do it quite to that extent, but what I can certainly offer are sessions, and again, I'm just sort of providing some examples here, potentially within different feeder groups, so a TAB zone, a Grafton zone, a Gruppen zone, et cetera, with, you know, with parents, with staff, et cetera. So, you know, part of coming in new, I don't want to say staff were made to come to the meetings, but they were sort of kind of made to come to the meetings, right, at a faculty meeting. So we certainly want all of their, all of their continued feedback and support, because if they're not going to weigh in, then they're certainly not going to buy into where we're headed. And I think that's something, we need, that collective commitment is extremely important for us, whether it's community, staff, and kids. We can't do it alone, so all of us have to function together to get it moving forward. Mr. Minter?
Thank you, Mr. Medford. I think I have to give kudos, especially to Lowell Garlet, who's president of county council PTA.
Absolutely.
When I go to their meetings and all of the presidents meet there from the schools, you get great feedback from all of those. And, you know, just if they say one or two words, it may mean a whole lot, just listening to them. So, you know, I'm really appreciative of all the volunteers we have and the feedback we get.
Hard-working people.
Yeah.
I have enjoyed this. This is, we've had the opportunity to talk about your four questions and what you were aiming to find out, but this is, I think, a level of excitement in where we go in the future, as just as though you come back from professional development with new ideas, new[1762.26]